All right, we'll call the meeting of the City Council to order and state that the notice for this meeting was duly posted. There is a quorum of City Council. Everyone is here. If you'll stand, our Police Department honor guard will post our colors and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Would everyone please join me in saying the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We would like to recognize former councilman Brett Calia in the back. Brett, thanks for being here. All right, item three are presentations and recognitions. Item 3A is presentation of a check to the city by Union Pacific Foundation for the Edible Arbor Trail Project.
Good evening, everybody. It's my honor to announce that we received a grant from the Union Pacific Foundation in the amount of $2,000, and I see Raquel coming up here with the money. So Raquel Espinoza with Union Pacific Foundation, and the proceeds are going to go towards an Edible Arbor Trail Grove.
Very good. So what kind of edible tree are we going to plant?
I think a citrus. See what's out there in the fall?
Very good. Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for doing that. We'll invite you over when it bears fruit. Yeah. All right, we also have a presentation by the Gulf Coast Water Authority commemorating the execution of the raw water supply contract. Look at here, he's bringing bottled water.
Mayor and Council, I'd like to introduce Ivan Langford, general manager of Gulf Coast Water Authority, and I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you. I know I was here last month, and we executed the agreement between the city and Gulf Coast Water Authority, and we wanted to leave something with you to commemorate this. I think it's a pretty historic document that the city and the water authority has signed for the future of the city and its water supply. So we had some plaques made for each of you.
Very nice.
And your senior staff, y'all can fight over it. So to be perfectly honest, Sharon put me up to this.
Okay. I got you.
She said because City Missouri City was the first of our west customer group to sign the agreement, it should be commemorated.
There you go.
So I didn't hesitate to do what she told me.
Well, we appreciate the partnership. It's very important to the citizens of Missouri City to know that they've got this partnership with Gulf Coast, and that we are going to have a water supply in the future for not only us, but our children, so thank you for that.
Mayor and Council, if I could just take a moment to call out Sharon Valiant and Robert Upton and the Public Works Department for their hard work on this, and thank them for their efforts on this, and of course, our partnership with GCWA.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, the next item is a presentation by our Communications Department for the city's Telly Award for local television, commercial, and programming. Da-da. All right, Stacy. The Academy Awards. Oh, it's his first class, baby.
Hey, awesome.
Yeah, Cory, you better get up there and hog in than some of that.
Mayor, City Council, City Manager, Staff, and our guests. The communications team earned a bronze Telly Award in the use of humor category for our Mayor Owen's video, which we used to launch Missouri City's participation in the HEB Healthy Challenge earlier this year. Production of the video led by MCTV showcased a true show-me-city partnership of Fort Bend ISD, dispatch, 911 mascot cellphone Sally, and Red E. Fox, Fire Chief Russell Sander, former Police Chief Joel Fitzgerald, tennis director Thomas Daniels, Parks and Recreation Attendant Brian Barker, and Mayor Owen, who's the star of the show. As health and fitness are a city priority, we filmed the video at our premier recreation and tennis center to promote it to citizens. The video has generated interest from 546 people on the city's YouTube page, and we hope that some of those folks have come to either join or visit the facility, but it also generated thousands of views on the HEB site and other websites. So it was a great way for us to showcase Missouri City in a collective way. We placed third in the HEB statewide health initiative and plan to do better next year. Starting in January, the community challenge will now span four months and include more ways for the city to partner with citizens, schools, business, and volunteers to earn points for our community. We already have a plan that we're starting to put in place. The city's continued success in the competition in the face of its growing popularity and increasing competitiveness is a testament to the dedication Missouri City and our citizens have to the health of our community. This Telly is our second. We're very proud. We earned one last year in the political commentary category for our celebrating the Fort Bend Chamber of Commerce video that chronicled the rich history of the organization and its commitment to economic development growth in the region. The Tellies were founded in 1978, 1979. It's a national award that looks at outstanding local, regional, and cable TV commercials and programs. It honors the finest video and film productions and web commercials, videos and films, and winners represent the best work of the most respected entities in the world. There were more than 12,000 entries from all 50 states and numerous countries, and this year's winners also include ABC Creative Services, HBO Latin America, Shell Oil, Habitat for Humanity International, BET Networks, Edward Jones, Fairfax County Public Schools, the US Department of Agriculture, NBC Universal, Kansas City Chiefs, and Harpo Studios. So I just want to say a collective thank you to this terrific team that we work with and our entire city for helping us.
Quite a list of people we've created. I know. That's right. Look at that, would you? That's a Super Bowl of commercials, isn't it?
So the Tellies were awarded at the national conference this year, and I got ribbed by our team because we had a whole lot of projects going on, and they weren't able to go. But next year, we hope to win again, and you all will go, so thank you.
All right, Chief. Let's see a picture of those motorcycles that somebody said that we threw the public into the bind.
Well, we actually have a picture for you, and I could get the motorcycle unit to step up, please. Including one that's on one leg, but he didn't ride his motorcycle up here.
And he didn't get it hurt on the motorcycle?
No, not.
Yeah.
We haven't crashed any of them.
Yeah.
Actually, that's not totally true, because in training, they crash them a lot intentionally. I guess you may have seen that they won't fall over, or they're not designed to fall over that easily. The other person I'd love to recognize is former Councilman Brett Calia, because Brett Calia and Councilman Jerry Wyatt, as far as I can remember, at least back in 2005, although clearly I can remember beyond 2005, but at least till 2005, I can remember those two always asking us, how come we don't have a motorcycle unit? They saw the value in it. Well, you know, we had challenging budget times. Well, we were able to pull it off with the support of council and the support of city staff, so we now have a motorcycle unit. The gentleman standing behind me or the members of that motorcycle unit, it was not easy to get on that team, by the way. It was even harder to pass that school in Tucson. I'm sure the weather was nice and comfortable and cool, but the Canadians about passed out that were also in their class, so our Texan guys really shined. But we'd like to present this picture to you. I don't drop it. And I'd actually love for all of council, if it's possible, to have a photo, a group photo with the motorcycle drivers and this.
We can do that.
Photo, if it's possible. Would it be appropriate if we had former Councilman Calia join us? Would that be appropriate?
Where are you on it? Down there?
Yeah. And on behalf of the motorcycle unit, we present this to council. This will allow us all to be quite responsive to the needs of our community. Oftentimes, the concerns of the community is the speeding in their neighborhoods. These guys connect to neighborhoods as well as the major thoroughfares, so hopefully you've seen them out. They've been on the street now for about three weeks.
Yeah.
I've seen them parked behind cars.
Come on, Brett. Good job, guys.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it very much.
I think we have a long one.
You say, Brett? I think you do in October, you don't know. I didn't have any of my nerve in front of me. Hell, you know.
She's telling us something.
No, my dick friend, they weren't here. No, no, he wasn't here.
There you go, Mayor.
No, he wasn't here. I need you. Come on.
Hold it on, Brett. Get in here. Come on, Brett. Get in here.
The wide angle, man.
One, two.
Where you going?
Thank you.
What are we going to reply to?
It's in the budget this year.
I keep waiting.
I don't know about this building.
That's right. He's still here.
And so I don't forget the other very important component of this. We wouldn't be operational at all, at all, if it wasn't for the hard work of our IT people, especially Joby. He did a whole lot of really cool things. I think they're going to recognize us in State Tech Magazine for some of the high-tech stuff that's on these motorcycles. So something to be said for Joby also.
Very good. Yes.
Let me see, you don't know why we won.
Well, I know. We'll figure out when. Yeah. All right, let's see. Item four, public comments. This is an opportunity for anyone to address council on any issue that's not an agenda item. I didn't have anyone sign up. Item five, our staff reports. We've got a solid waste presentation.
Mayor and Council, I just wanted to update you as to where we're at with regard to the solid waste consolidation project that's been underway for many, many years. We started the conversation about this back in 2007, as many of you may recall. That took place due to the fact, and I'll touch on a little bit of history to get people caught up to why we're here today, and that is, again, 2007. At the time, we had over 30 contracts for solid waste within our city for residential contracts for solid waste. Within those contracts, we had varying rates, levels of service, and we had multiple companies utilizing our rights of way and providing service to our citizens. Due to that, we had, and we also have what many of you may recall, subscriber service in which individuals who did not live within a prescribed area or with a HOA or mud representing them would have individual contracts, and that was the straw that broke the camel's back in that it, at the time, would cause a fractured system. People were not paying for their service, and the solid waste company in which we had a contract at the time, which was Republic Services, Allied Waste at that time, brought it to our attention that they couldn't continue to service that contract with the way in which it was set up. So at that time, the city determined that we would go forward and try to get a city solid waste contract for those people who were not in an organized group that we saw. And what occurred there was that when we put that out for bid, no one would bid it. No contractor would bid it.
Can I interrupt you for one minute? Because I do think this is important. The citizens voted for us to go with, that was a valid initiative, and the citizens said that we would go with solid waste collection.
So then we went forward and worked with Republic Services. And just to give you an idea of what was going on at the time, in 2009, we had solid waste providers operating in the city. It was divided up among, as you can see, many different companies, and with the distribution, with a small majority with Republic Services, which was a non-city contract at the time, and you see the others that were providing service throughout the city. Prior to 2010, the city provided service again to 2,688 households. Again, the rest were serviced through the contracts of others. Through that process, we saw a wide range of fees, services, and service quality, as a matter of fact. As Councilman Wyatt just mentioned, in May of 2010, a majority of the voters citywide cast ballots in support of a consolidated municipal waste program. On the ballot, the question read for the voters to determine the proposed adoption of an ordinance requiring the owners or occupants of residential units to participate in a citywide consolidated municipal trash collection program, except that existing sole-source contracts may be allowed to continue until such time contracts' base rate is not lower than the city solid waste collection service base rate. And I'll touch on that a little bit further. In 2010, the city executed, five years after working with them, we executed a five-year contract with Republic Services. In that contract, there was a term that we created, basically, but it was the quote price-to-be, and this meant that this allows for an entity to continue with a contract in effect prior to July 14, 2010, and any extension of the contract until the base rate for that service is equal to or exceeds the rate of the comparable level of service in the city contract. The rate for this purpose is considered to be the comparable rate exclusive of any taxes or administrative fees that may be charged. Wanted to bring that to you, because again, that touches on what Councilman Wyatt had mentioned. Upon signing that agreement, after having the majority of the public approve that we'd go that direction, the city again had 2,688 households that were on the contract that we had at the time. Upon signing that into laws and ordinance in the contract that we had, it then went to 10,903 households, or 45% of residential customers that exceeded the price-to-be at that time, and they were moved over to the city's contract. And thus, we're able to save money, and we had a consolidated process. Today, 72% of the households within the city have been converted to the consolidated contract with Republic Services, and that is on the residential side. And today, there are still approximately 28 households below the price-to-be and on contract spread between five other providers. And on the commercial side, as you'll recall, February 1st of last year, 2013, City Council authorized Republic Services to be the exclusive solid waste provider for all commercial customers located in city limits, and put in place a commercial franchise fee with 100% of the commercial customers now converted. We went through that process over an extended period of time, working with the customers out there and the service providers, and we believe we have now, not having had a record of anybody and who was using what services, we believe now we have a full record of who has what service, and they've now been converted to Republic Services for the commercials side. Next, I wanted to show to you, from that conversion, we now see that 72% of the accounts out there are on city contract for residential service. We still have other providers, but you will see compared to the other, and I'll show you another comparative slide to show you the difference between 2009 and 2014. Again, these that are not on, that are not Republic Service city contract are still below the price-to-be. This is a comparative of 2009 versus 2014, whereby you can see that non-city contract went from 42% down to 1%. We only have one area in the community that's still Republic that is not on the city contract due to price-to-be. Dependable disposal went from 6% to 1%. VF Waste has maintained basically the same service levels that they had, and WCA went down one percentage point, Waste Management, eight percentage points. And you can see the dramatic difference, 17% to 72% based on city service. Brings us to the present and looking toward the future. The current city contract is set to expire on the 31st of December, 2015. That may sound like it's out in the future, however, with the things that need to be done, it's upon us, and that's why I wanted to bring it to you tonight. This contract will be, we're proposing to put out to bid in the market as a bundled service of a single type of residential service and a commercial service with adopted rate schedule for dumpster service frequency and container size in March of 2015. This would be, again, open to the open market for all to bid upon. Award the contract in June of 2015 for an effective date of January 2016. And from June until January, the company that is awarded the bid would have to begin ordering equipment and placing that equipment, and that would give opportunity between June and January 1 to accomplish that task.
Hey, Bill, when we bid this out, are we going to bid it out with or without curbside recycling?
Well, that would be, yes, sir. We staff would like to go that direction and propose that there be one level of service. It'd be, what we're be proposing to you would be cart service both for solid waste and for recycling.
Automated cart service? Okay.
So does that mean the communities that don't have recycling will have to have recycling, or is it still a choice?
We would propose that it not be a choice, that it be a single package.
Unless they were under the bid.
Correct.
If they were under the bid, they would continue to stay with what they have. But if they are at the city rate or above, they would go with what we're going to bid for, which would be automated with curbside recycling.
Correct. And at a minimum, 72% of those residents now would go with that service.
Yeah.
Because they are below the price-to-be.
And remember, automated means that they would provide the containers that the truck picks up without people.
Exactly. Yeah, it's one to where there's a lot of human error that occurs now, and even complaints about, you know, trash cans being torn apart like.
Right.
With automated, it's one to where they pick it up right there, dump it, put it right back, and.
Which is an educational process in itself of teaching residents how to place that container on the curb.
Correct.
Because it has to be placed on the curb in a certain way for that automated picker to pick it up. If they have it backwards, it can't pick it up.
True.
My understanding is, recycling now, you don't have to segregate the various types of recycling material? You can put it all in one?
You can, yeah. They have now 65-gallon carts, similar to what you see with the regular trash carts, or they even offer the 95-gallon, which is the typical you see for garbage. And with that, because of the ease, years ago, I was in a community where we converted, and they had the bins, and we did not have great participation because it was cumbersome to do. Trash blew everywhere, so people didn't do it. With this, it's just a matter of getting in the mindset of sorting inside your house. And they see with using carts that the participation in recycling skyrockets.
Typically, the standard is about 70% to 80% participation with use of carts in regards to recycling.
And that's diversion from the landfill.
Yes. And so with the, what are they, not the baskets, you just mentioned?
Bins.
The bins, it's about 30% participation.
So again, and it would bring about uniformity, single type of service, and with that, they are able to streamline their processes and their service, thus bringing prices down. And so if we do, and if we go with the schedule, then again, we should be online to have that service begin January 1, 2016. So you have any answering questions?
Yeah, I have one question. Do we monitor to make sure that the company, the few communities that are not on the city, in terms of how their bids take place, are those bids apple-to-apple to ours? And for example, do we require that those carriers maintain the same liability, the insurance as we do, we require of our vendor?
We have not. The only thing we have looked at for comparable purposes to make sure it's apples-to-apples is that they have, we compare them to a service. We have six service levels, and we compare it to the closest service level that we provide, and only look at price. And we look at the base rate price.
We really should consider that cost of business because that's calculated into their price to compete with us. And particularly the liability, the insurance to be on the street, the same thing that we require of our people ought to be required of them.
And if we want to go, or if council desires to go that direction, then we would need to change our existing ordinance that only requires it to be compared to the base rate.
But in any other contractor that came into the city doing public service, we have similar type requirements as far as liability, in the same shape. Is this something we probably should have thought of a long time ago?
We'll look into that. That's an interesting idea of just that if you're providing, if you're providing solid waste service, whether it is the city's contractor or a contractor for the HOAs, that are you, do you have to have, essentially, that they have to be, have comparable, like you said, liability, everything else as per the city? We'll take a look at that and see how that could work.
Bill, in addition to that, last time this conversation came up, the costs of services was calculated based on distance to the dumping area, the number of homes, and I forget what that third one is. I'd like to see that again as well, so we can get a clear understanding of how prices are.
How they break down and charge us?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So we'll be happy to do that, and as I say, over the next few months, I'll be working on putting together the contract and potentially getting someone from the outside to assist with this. It is a pretty technical field now, just as Councilman Smith mentioned, some of the components, to make sure that we don't miss something.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
We'll look into that as well.
Are there many out services out there to help us with this consulting?
There are a few, and I'm building a list now.
Very good. Thank you. All right, item six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
Need a motion?
I need a motion.
Councilman Emery made the motion. You make it a second. We're on the consent agenda.
Second.
I want to see something.
No problem. Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item seven, public hearings and related actions. Zoning public hearings are none. Public hearings and related actions, there are none. Appointments, let me remind everybody on appointments that between now and next council meeting, we need to decide on those positions and those people that we're going to appoint in those positions. May also remind those of you that if you have people that are in your district that are serving now and have expressed an interest in continuing to serve, but you do not intend to recommend them, you need to let them know that. That's not Maria's job. That's your job. picker to pick it up. If they have it backwards, it can't pick it up.
True.
My understanding is, on recycling now, you don't have to segregate the, the various types of recycling material, you can put it all in one...
You can, yeah, they have now sixty-five gallon carts, similar to what you see with the regular trash carts, or they even offer the ninety-five gallon, which is the typical you see for garbage. And they, with that, because of the ease, years ago, I was in a community where we, we converted, and they had the bins, and we did not have great participation because it was cumbersome to do. Trash blew everywhere, so people didn't do it. With this, it's just a matter of getting in the mindset of sorting inside your house. And they see with using carts, that the participation in recycling skyrockets.
Typically, the standard is about seventy to eighty percent participation with use of carts in regards to recycling.
And that's diversion from the landfill.
Yes. And so, and with the, with the, what are they, not the baskets, the, you just mentioned.
Bins.
The bins, it's about thirty percent
Yeah.
participation.
So, again, and it would bring about uniformity, single, single type of service, and with that, they are able to streamline their processes and their service, thus bringing prices down. And so, if we do, and if we go with the schedule, then, again, we should be online to have that service begin January one, two thousand sixteen. So, if you have any answering questions, you may have.
Yeah, I have one question. Do we monitor to make sure that the company, the few communities that don't, that are not on the city, in terms of how their bids take place, are those bids apple to apple to ours? And for, for example, do we, do we require that those carriers maintain the same liability, the insurance, as we do, we require of, of our vendor?
We have not. The only thing we have looked at for comparable purposes, to make sure it's apples to apples, is that they have a, we compare them to a service, we have six service levels, and we compare it to the closest service level that we provide, and only look at price. And we look at the base rate price.
We really should consider their cost of business, because that's calculated into their price to compete with us. And particularly the liability, the insurance to be on the street, the same thing that we require of our people ought to be required of them.
And if, and if we want to go, or if council desires to go that direction, then we would need to change our existing ordinance that only requires it to be compared to the base rate, so.
But in any other contractor that came into the city during public service, we have similar type requirements as far as liability, in the same shape, is this something we just probably should have thought of a long time ago?
We'll look into that. That's an interesting idea of just, that if you're providing, if you're providing solid waste service, whether the city's contractor or a contractor for the HO ways, that are you, do you have to have, essentially, that they have to be, have comparable, like you said, liability, everything else, as per the, the city. We'll take a look at that and see how that could work.
Bill, in addition to that, last time this conversation came up, the costs of services was calculated based on distance to the dumping area, the number of homes, and I forget what that third one is. I'd like to see that again as well, so we can get a clear understanding of how prices are.
How they break down and charge us?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. So, we'll be happy to do that. And as I say, over the next few months, I'll be working on putting together the contract and potentially getting someone from the outside to, to assist with this. It is a pretty technical field now, just as Councilman Smith mentioned some of the components, to make sure that we don't miss something.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions?
We'll look into that as well.
Yeah.
Are there, are there many out services, services out there to, to help us with this, consulting firms?
There are a few, and I'm getting, I'm building a list now.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item six is a consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed?
True.
Need a motion?
I need a motion.
Councilman Emery made the motion.
I'm second.
You make a second?
Huh?
We're on the consent agenda.
Second.
I want to see something.
No problem. Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made a second. All those in favor? Motion carries. Item seven, public hearings and related actions. Zoning, public hearings are none. Public hearings and related actions, there are none. Appointments, let me remind everybody on appointments, that between now and next council meeting, we need to decide on those positions and those people that we're going to appoint in those positions. May also remind those of you, that if you have people that are in your district that are serving now, and have expressed an interest in continuing to serve, but you do not intend to recommend them, you need to let them know that. That's not Maria's job, that's your job. I think you have one. So, forward out, before that next meeting, that person needs to be notified, and then we need to have recommendations to fill those positions that we have open. And we have one, Parks, position one, and position twelve and thirteen, which don't have to be filled, but could be filled, because they're twelve and thirteen, we added those still, so. And we have AP and Z.
Yes, one position on AP and Z.
One is currently vacant, Ron Lee's position, and then any of those that you do not intend to recommend reappointing for your, in those, out of those districts, let them know. So, otherwise, we will make those recommendations at next council meeting and vote on them.
Can I make a suggestion, that you put together a schedule for us that shows the candidates for the various open positions?
Yeah.
And circulate that, so we know exactly what we're
Yeah, she's got it. The ones we interviewed, and what they were asking for, and in what is gonna be open and what's not. So, we'll have those for you before the next meeting.
Okay.
We'll be ready to vote on those, all right? Item ten, ordinances, there are no ordinances. Item eleven, resolutions, eleven A.
Right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, nine A?
Yeah, I went through nine, yeah, nine. Yes, okay. Consider authorizing rotation policy for the election of the mayor pro temp.
No, you had that.
Okay. Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Emery made the second. I do have, Henderson, you want to speak on that?
I would.
Okay.
You know, because you don't you ever be on that soft spoken person off of Parks Board. My name is Henderson Hunter. I live at twenty-three, twenty-seven Walnut Ridge. I want to make two statements before I address that. I want to congratulate the new councilperson and the mayor pro temp. And Don isn't here, I want to apologize to him for not calling him last year on his win for city council. I see that what you want to talk about, this rotation for the seat of Mayor Pro Temp, closely along the lines of maybe Sugar Land. I realize the city charter won't be come up until two thousand sixteen, but I'm quite sure that city attorneys can figure out how to make this appear right for everyone. I remember running, and, a run-in with them when I was on Parks Board, and saying that, let me congratulate the person who brought this up in the first place, and those that agreed with it. I realize that you are trying to be proactive, to make sure that others have an opportunity to serve and bring a fresh perspective and idea, so that more members can get exposure at the top, which is a good thing for all our citizens in Missouri City. By revolving, by rotating the seat, would or could give that person a year or two of experience. So, in that positive light, and that proactiveness in which you now seem to want to do for the city, I was thinking that maybe it would also be a good time to discuss amongst yourselves term limits for city council, the same as in Sugar Land. And also, figure out how to have more citizens, or other citizens, on the committee that reviews the city charter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, there was a motion by Councilman Wyatt, and a second by Councilman Emery. Is there any other?
I have a question for Caroline.
Yeah.
What, what does this mean?
Certainly, at a previous city council meeting, council had asked staff to, to initiate the process for a mayor pro temp election policy on a rotation basis, and one of the items that was discussed was length of service. So, this was staff's effort to give something to council for that consideration. Of course, the charter currently does provide that that mayor pro temp does serve at the pleasure of council.
Right.
So, that is a, a component of this policy as well. But under this particular proposal, the initial consideration matter would be for council members who have not yet served as mayor pro temp. So, that, that would be the first class of, of council members that would be eligible.
Right.
Then the next consideration is consecutive length of service on the city council of those sitting members. In the event that there are more than one council member who have the same length of service as other council members, the next consideration on that would be total length of service.
I got you.
In the event that person had served
That's a tiebreaker.
Previously, correct. Now, in the event, and I guess it's certainly conceivable, that there could be a circumstance in which both of those things are equal as well, under this policy, then it's up to the council to select among that group of people who meet those qualifications.
Shall we flip a coin?
You can do it any way you want to. You draw straws, sometimes.
Sense of humor.
No, but I know councils that draw straws.
That certainly could be a possibility, or any other consideration that council would like to make. And then finally, once that process has been completed, and at any given council group, all members have served as mayor pro temp, it would re-initiate at that, at the first level.
And does this say anywhere, any, that the person should serve at least one year?
The charter provides that.
Okay. I mean, somebody, everybody has served, and then you get somebody that's newly elected, like Chris, you know?
And in that circumstance, if all the other members of council had served, and a new person was elected to the council who had not served, that would be the, that would be that individual.
Well, he wouldn't have served if he was just elected.
Correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure the points are clear.
Yeah, no.
Is it standard for us to put a policy on top of the charter, when it already designates a way of electing or approving something?
I would say it's not common, and I can't think of any circumstance off the top of my head in which we've done that. But certainly, the, the council group can enact a policy of any type of matter that it would like to, to guide itself. Now, now, this one is unique, in that as the mayor pro temp does serve at the pleasure of council, this is, this is a policy that any given election period, the, that sitting body can dispense with and elect not to follow.
That was my next question. Does it pass on to the next council, to the next council, or this is something that has to?
It, it will be there, but it will be there as guidelines only.
And I think the important thing is what Caroline says, it's at council's pleasure. There is no guarantee that you can serve a full year. The term is one year, but again, it goes back to, at some point in time, if, if this council decided that they wanted to change the mayor pro temp for any reason, they can do it with a vote of council, majority vote of council.
And that is correct.
Yeah. Otherwise, you'd serve the year.
Caroline, I have a question. So, we put this policy in place, and next year, two thousand fifteen, we have four council seats are up for election. And let's just hypothetically say that all four seats come back. And this policy is there, but now if someone changed their mind, they don't have to go with this policy. Or if you have all new four people come up, they'll look back and say, well, we weren't here when this was decided.
They can change it.
That is correct. A majority of council
Absolutely.
could change it.
Absolutely.
We could, we could put it back on the agenda in six months and change it. If, if it's just the same group.
Yeah.
If we wanted to do that, and I don't think we don't, we would go through all of this and do that.
Yeah, we don't bind future councils to what the policy is.
Aren't we essentially, like, circumventing the charter, that being?
I would contend not, because each, each group, when they are having that election, will have their free will to elect that individual. These are merely guidelines that council may consider if they so desire, or may ignore if they so desire.
Now, the next time Charter Review Commission comes up, you could literally put this in the charter, as an amendment to the charter. And then it is binding.
Then it would be binding.
Yes. Then it's binding. Any other questions?
Can you potentially put a policy on top of that?
Huh?
You could put a policy on top of that, that's not in, in conflict, you know, and, and, and in order to save the, the charter, so to speak, in this, the final sentence of the policy does state that as a mayor's pro temp serves at the pleasure of the council, this policy may be used as council seats fit.
So, I, you know, I guess the only thing I wanted to ask Caroline, is so what, basically, what we're voting on for today, you're telling me next year, it's, doesn't matter what we vote on this year?
It's a non-binding policy.
It's a non-binding.
It would stay in place unless a council voted to change it, Robin. It goes back to the whole thing that I said five years ago when I brought this up, nobody wanted to do it. This year, we wanted to do it, but we didn't have a policy in place to do it. So, yeah. Now at least, we've got something out there that we can refer back to and say, guys, this council did adopt a policy, this council.
But this council also could change it, too.
Exactly. That's true of anything.
So, I guess, only other thing, I guess I'm, I'm trying to clarify. If a person is up for their rotation policy next year, does that stop the other council from wanting for that position?
It technically should.
They will automatically be rotated. If we, if we honor the rotation, they will automatically, the next senior person would automatically go into that role that has not served previously.
Right. But, but I'm with you on that.
But if you could get four councilmen that said that we don't want to go by that policy, or
And then we want to let
You want to elect it
Councilman Wyatt.
Yeah, different way.
It goes back to
Yeah. It does, but I mean, at least we've got some guidelines here to follow, and say that we had a policy.
Well, in, in reality, this is, this is what it, what it does. And, and, and I go alone. I, I've probably been mayor pro temp longer than y'all will ever get a chance to be. I mean, that's just the truth of it. Okay? And the last two times I've been mayor pro temp, I didn't even ask for the job. Okay? But, but this way, if everybody feel comfortable and honor this, then it gives everybody an opportunity to serve as mayor pro temp. Now, if it really got down to the basis, basis of, let's say Alan could not perform his job, this council would come back and say, we're gonna decide who's gonna be the mayor. It may not automatically be the mayor pro temp. That's what the charter said we have to do anyway. Okay? So, so there shouldn't be any reservations about doing this.
Right.
Okay? Because even if we honor it for a year, you know, and, you know, next year, y'all get replaced, and the other guys come through, they may not want to do this.
Okay, no, that, that was my point. My point was, along with that, even if anybody on this council who aren't, who put this into policy disagrees with it
That's right.
twelve months from now, then it changes.
If they get four people.
They get four votes.
You gotta know how to count. You can't get nothing done without four.
If you have four.
Right, 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 right.
I mean, so, yeah, it's about the vote, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you get four people to do it?
Go for it.
It just seems to me
The only other thing that I would
In fact, I mean, the policy doesn't really affect anything, then, if
The only other thing that I would say probably needs to be in that, there are times when people choose not to be. Even though they're the one that's up because of seniority, they may choose
Not to do it, yeah.
to serve. Okay?
And it goes to the next person?
And it should go to the next person. So, I don't know how we put that in there, Caroline, but they, I don't want them to think that it's mandatory that they are. They may choose not to do it. And we've had, we've had situations, I have, since mayor, having a councilperson say, I really am not interested in being mayor pro temp.
I have some proposed language, if council would like to consider that
Okay.
for a potential amendment. Any council member may decline a nomination for, I'm sorry, a nomination and/or election to the office of mayor pro temp.
That works. It just gives them a ch, give them a choice. Any other comments? All right, we did have a motion and a second. All those in favor, oh, yes?
Want to entertain an amendment?
Yes.
A motion for amendment.
Yes. There's a motion in the second, or?
If we agree, we don't need it. You agree?
I agree.
No, we need, okay. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, can I have that one, if I can see if
Do, okay.
Okay, four is Councilman Jarrett Wyatt, who is the mayor, and against abstaining?
Okay.
You can't abstain. You can be away from the table.
We tried desperately to get away from the table. If you want me to, I will.
According, according to our charter, you either have to, you either have to vote, or you have to be away from the table. There's no abstention in our, in our charter.
So, you're away from the table.
We appreciate that technicality, Councilman Wyatt.
No, no, the point of it is
Consider, let me finish. Consider me away from
Away from the table.
the table.
And that's okay.
Chris, are you away from the table?
Yeah.
Just back your chair up from the, that's, that, that puts you away from the table, guy. Chris, yeah, there you go. Back up, there you go. All right. Three, two, two.
Got it.
Okay. And the motion failed.
It fails.
Huh?
Motion failed.
All right. All right. Let's see. Item ten, ordinances, there are no ordinances. Item eleven are resolutions. Item ten A is considered a resolution in support of our Great Region 2040 Plan.
And just to clarify, that's eleven A.
What did I say?
Ten A.
Oh, ten A, eleven A, yeah. I'm sorry. Eleven A, yes.
Here tonight to present to you, Mr. Grant Stinkle, Director of Community and Environmental Planning for the season calendar.
Good evening, Mayor.
How are you?
Thank you very much for having me tonight. It's my pleasure to present to you briefing on and request the resolution in support for the Our Great Region 2040 Plan. Before I go any farther, I want to just stress that this is not a comprehensive plan of the type you work on here at the city. Rather, this is a long-range, high-level document based on extensive public input, strategies that local governments and others can work on, either together or individually, now or later, to ensure our economic viability and quality of life into year 2040. And I'll also add that it's particularly exciting for me to be here in Missouri City, because you are one of the communities that really is a leader in the thirteen-county HGAC region, in terms of sound planning and quality of life initiatives for the residents, which we have recognized in a number of our programs. So, many of the things that you will see identified as strategies in this plan are already things you have been doing successfully for some time. This effort has been unfolding over the past three years, and the steering committee that guided it is listed here. I'm not going to read all of those organizations. HGAC served as the staff, but this group really served as, as the steering wheel for the project. If you look at that, you see it's a pretty big and diverse steering committee, but it's also infinitely too small to represent all of the interests in the region, the size of ours, the complexity of ours. So, this, this was really at the highest level. We also had ten working groups, people from local governments, private sector, citizen groups, about two hundred and fifty in all comprised the advisory committees. We had an online survey that about nine thousand residents in the region responded to. Another six thousand attended one of various community forums and public meetings we had over the past three years. So, we feel that the recommendations contained in this document have been vetted throughout the region's urban, suburban, rural, and coastal areas. Now, the overall aim of this project is to ensure that our region is as good or a better place to live, work, and prosper in 2040 as it is today, and that be true of the entire thirteen counties that HGAC serves and all its residents, regardless of their stage in life or of their station in life. Now, we have some very strong tailwinds that I think will, will help us, but these, these very forces of growth and economic vitality also present a challenge for us. We are forecasting that the region by 2040 is going to add another three point seven million residents. That is roughly equivalent to the size of the city of Los Angeles today. Good news is also two million more jobs. While this growth will create challenges for us, I, I would certainly not trade it for the, the challenges faced by regions that are declining in population and jobs. This map is maybe a little bit hard to, to read, but basically, the, the red is population density. So, the redder it is, the denser the population, the greener it is, the less population. That's population in the region in 2010. That's what it looks like when the This map is maybe a little bit hard to read, but basically, the red is population density. So the redder it is, the denser the population. The greener it is, the less population. That's population in the region in 2010. That's what it looks like when the three-point-seven million people are added. So you can see in this area, particularly throughout Fort Ben County, Montgomery County, a lot of our fast-growing suburban areas are going to grow considerably, and the problems and issues we deal with in terms of drainage congestion and maintaining open space for our residents and the quality of life that we all enjoy will be strained by this growth. But as I mentioned before, I think the economic advantages to us can be capitalized on, and that's why we think this planning is so important. This is a little bit hard to read. That green zone is showing areas within which currently, some of the top twenty-five job centers can be reached by ten minutes or less via transit. How can we expand our transit network to get more of our residents within that green zone? This is a map that I find quite troubling. It shows the percentage of people over age twenty-five that have a college degree. The darkest green is fifty percent. I'm having a little trouble with the small screen, but the yellows, oranges, and reds are well below fifty percent. I think the red is below eleven percent. So as we talk about competing in the future for the knowledge jobs of the 21st century, it seems like that competition needs to start by changing some of the colors on this map as we go forward. Another graph that may be a bit hard to read, but the thing I'd like you to keep your eye on is that dashed line. While our region is still comparatively young in terms of the median age of its population, that is changing, particularly as the large baby boomer population, which I'm right in the middle of, ages into retirement and beyond. The upshot of it is our median age is going up, and the percentage of residents that are going to be sixty-five or over in 2040 is going to about triple. So issues of senior mobility, access to health care, housing, if there are concerns now, they will be three times such in the future. So what's in this plan to help us deal with any of this? There are fifteen broad goals. There are ninety-nine voluntary strategies. These are grouped into six broad themes that we're calling the big ideas. More on that in a minute. We also did six case studies where we worked with individual local governments and tried to test-drive some of these ideas in their context and see how they would work in real communities in the region. I also feel compelled to tell you what's not in the plan. This is an entirely voluntary document. There are no required actions. There are no unwilling participants. There are no funding commitments, implicit or explicit. And there is no effort to reduce local authority in any way. Sometimes, when I get to this slide, the air kind of goes out of the room. Well, if all this is voluntary and nothing is funded, what good is it? I appreciate that argument, but I would flip it on its head. I think the fact that this is an entirely voluntary plan has allowed us to be a little bit more bold, a little bit more idea-driven. And whether or not any of this happens is really up to you and the other hundred-and-fifty local governments and other entities in the region. So it will stand or fall solely on the power of the ideas, not on any mandate or requirement that's imposed on anybody. The big idea themes are listed here. Again, as we were going around the region, talking to people, we had hundreds and hundreds of issues that were raised, lots of ideas about potential strategies, but we really wanted to focus on the ones that came up, regardless of where we were. So if we were in downtown Houston, Fort Ben County, rural area, down in Galveston, which themes came up again and again in all those places? And within these themes, we drilled down a little bit deeper in terms of economic development. Obviously, you could write a whole, long-range plan on economic development. The thing we kept hearing was workforce readiness and education. We've got to be able to change that map, compete with our workforce and our educated population. In terms of environment, again, issues, green space, air quality. But as you were discussing earlier tonight, I was talking to somebody from the Water Development Board when we were developing this plan, and they said, well, I know that people in the Houston area always talk about traffic as the biggest problem. If the water's off for even one day, that's a really big problem. So we're not going to be worrying about traffic unless we have secured our water supply for the future. You're looking forward already in that area. Healthy communities. This is really not focused on access to health care. This is more, are our communities places where residents can lead an active, healthy lifestyle? You've been a leader in this with your edible trail, bikeways, that sort of thing. Can residents get the exercise and access to have fresh food that can prevent diseases, prevent needing them to prematurely need to enter the health care system? Housing. Again, we are a very affordable housing region. We have a lot of choices in a lot of different communities. But sometimes, we have imbalances of housing where it can access job opportunities, services, and transportation options. I was out in Bay City this morning, talking to the Madagorda County Commissioners. They have a lot of manufacturing facilities out there. Their workers, I think, average about a forty-five-minute commute. How can we work on balancing that out? Also, we'll improve our transportation system. Obviously, to be a great region, we're going to need to have a world-class transportation network. We need to have one that we can afford. And if you've been following the news, there is a lot of uncertainty about the future of funding for transportation projects. How can we be intentional about investing to make sure that we can still move freight, smartly expand our transit framework, provide options for biking and walking where they make sense in our fast-growing suburban areas, give communities the tools, as you've been working on here for a long time, access management, operations, maintenance, getting more out of the system we already have? And finally, resiliency. I think we do an outstanding job. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of practice in responding to disasters. What we're talking about with resiliency, though, is after that initial response, how fast can we get the businesses back open? People back in their houses, kids back in their schools? So those are the big ideas in the plan. As I mentioned, they're very high-level. We have a little bit more detail in the back of the document with these charts that show who some of the players may be, what some of the funding sources may be, some models that we might want to follow. I would de-emphasize that. We wanted to put some things in there to start the discussion, but really, those would be the things that we would be sorting out over the next thirty years in going forward on this document. Really, what we're looking for is support for these broad ideas and goals for the region as a whole. If you want more detail, I'll put a website up at the end, but there is additional detail beyond that table in something we call a strategy playbook. Additionally, as I mentioned, we did six case studies, looked at things like developing a linear bikeway through the Cypress Creek Greenway. Brazoria County was looking at how can they integrate some of their parks planning also into flood protection. I think these are both things you've already been doing for a while. Bay City and Huntsville looked at revitalizing their downtown cores. Houston looked at amending some of their parking and development ordinances to promote more mixed-use walkable development. And Galveston wanted to develop a tool that they could evaluate the return on investment for recycling and water conservation and other sustainability programs. You may also be interested in going to our website and looking in greater depth at those studies in addition to a number of reports that we prepared. Again, we wanted our document not to be a huge encyclopedia, really just stick with the high-level recommendations, but there was a lot of research and analysis that went into it. I would invite you to check any of that out on our website. So how do we implement an entirely voluntary plan? I think the key is building on existing efforts and learning from each other. Later this summer, we're going to be convening local governments and nonprofit groups throughout the region to find out what they're doing in all these areas already. Now, I know you coordinate a lot with other cities in this part of the region, as well as nationally, but we want to strengthen those bonds so we're not necessarily having to look elsewhere in the state or elsewhere in the country when we want to find a good idea that's worked somewhere. You know, we want to be able to talk to those people, facilitate that kind of networking. HGAC is involved in a number of regional plans as well. Transportation, economic development, workforce development. Those are all independent of this effort, but those planning bodies on which some of you serve are also looking at the recommendations in this plan. Some of them don't really have any sort of initiative going on right now, except at the local level. Maybe there will be some new partnerships that we can identify. And then what we plan to do is track progress, find out who is utilizing some of these recommendations, and then look, are we moving the needle? Are we changing that education map? Reducing travel times or vehicle travel? So this is not quite up to date. We've since had the city of Sugar Land adopt a resolution of support, and I've got pending consideration of resolution by Waller County, Madagorda County. We're really just getting started, but we're hoping you would consider adopting a resolution to support the plan as well. The website is www.ourregionone word dot org. And thank you again very much for your time and attention tonight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
I think we should at least acknowledge and appreciate the great work that HCA does in helping put together things and providing the leadership from a regional basis, which ultimately helped direct the federal dollars to our communities and the grants and that type of thing. And this is the type thing that really helps some of those things happen, so we do appreciate that.
Very good. We need a resolution?
Correct.
So is that your motion, then, to adopt the resolution? Councilman Wyatt made the motion, Councilman Smith made the second.
We see no money.
There's no other discussion, we'll vote, all those in favor. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, item eleven B is consider a resolution adopting a small business policy.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item is considered a resolution adopting a small business policy. If you recall, I presented the Al Phillips and Associates recommendations of a small business program. We staff took that and crafted a policy from that and presented it to the council committee, including full council, and with some revisions to be made. And that is what's presented tonight. Just to kind of go over the policy that's being presented, it basically contains three aspects. The first being the small business registration, where it provides a registration for small businesses in the Houston Woodlands, Sugar Land, MSA, with purchasing notifications and seminars and workshops. It also provides to small businesses which are physically located in the city or have a resident that has fifty-one percent ownership of a business within the city limits. Of course, sealed proposals, which may be awarded up to five points, a hundred points of a merit prudential-based scale, and awarding for proposed sealed bid proposals. And then also, the third aspect is the reporting mechanism of the results. Under the small business registration, that would entail registration of small businesses meeting United States Small Business Administration, SBA, size standards, if they would be located in the Houston Woodlands, Sugar Land, MSA, which includes Austin, Brazoria, Chambers, Fort Ben, Galveston, Paris, Liberty, Montgomery, and Waller Counties. And it's also provide registered businesses with notification and access to at least two annual city purchasing workshops in which we would provide how to do business with the city, as well as what type of products and services that we would be going out and did. We would also provide, this would also provide registered businesses with additional notification from the city for sealed proposal contracts over fifty thousand dollars.
The second aspect is the business points that we talked about. Small businesses located within the city limits are owned by fifty-one, owned fifty-one percent by a city resident or a prime contractor who makes a good faith effort to hire small businesses located in the city or owned by city residents will be eligible for a five-point adjustment on a hundred-point merit prudential-based scale. Some, or, I'm sorry, these preference points will not apply to federally funded contracts because by law, we cannot do that. The good faith effort means that it will make an outreach, include an outreach to small businesses, designating a small business contact person and executing a formal contract or enforceable letter of intent with the small business. And the final aspect is a reporting mechanism in which city staff will report the results of this small business program to the city council on a corollary basis. We anticipate through the MSA area that this program will increase the vendor participation through the issuance of notifications and workshop sessions provided to the MSA area small businesses. So we do see a benefit and an increase in participation through this program.
Wes, do we have the, do we have the program in place to monitor and track this internally?
We will. We don't, we took a look at how many businesses this would, how many different transactions this would entail. And over the last year, if we sit, and this can vary, of sealed proposals over fifty thousand dollars, we did twenty-eight last year.
Okay.
So we don't see a whole lot of effort and time. The time will be verifying the payment information coming back, and we will just have to see how that goes, and we'll bring that to you.
And purchasing going to conduct the workshops?
Yes. And we'll have additional staff to help them do that.
Talk a little bit more about the good faith effort, how we're going to ensure that, you know, that that's adhered to?
That will be adhered, that will be a monitoring aspect when the, when the contract's awarded and when, as payments are progress, progress payments are made, we will verify that, how that effort is done.
Is there any, is there any penalty if they don't, you know, comply with the good faith effort and we've given the contract to them?
Yes, sir. There's, I believe it's a year suspension if they fail to abide by their agreement.
Was there any consideration for a monetary penalty?
We did not do that. We did not do that.
Wes, while I was looking through the policy, I didn't really feel like it captured the essence of what the consultant recommended. One of the things specifically was the certification process and us deeming or deciding who was a small business. We haven't, as a city, gone through that type of process. It costs thousands of dollars. There are several agencies who have. Because of that, I want to tag this item because I feel like we really need to go back and consider the consultant's recommendations. I'm completely for a small business program, but I really want to capture that in our policy.
Mayor, there's a tag on the table.
Right.
Are you all asking for it to be sent back to the Finance and Budget Committee?
I think that's what she's asking.
Now, under the tagging rules, this will be placed on the next council agenda, so we-
That committee needs to meet before then.
It would be recommended to have that prior to that time period, then.
Right.
Next item.
And who is on that committee?
And you.
Me and you.
And John.
Okay. And y'all need to meet before the next meeting.
Well, I know we're not supposed to discuss-
Just don't.
Well, let me finish. Since it's tagged, I think the committee would need your specific concerns.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what I was-
Yeah. So they can address those.
I'll send them over to Maria to get them to you guys.
Okay.
All right, item eleven C. Consider a resolution granting general authority to the city manager who is designated to approve-
his designate to approve change orders to certain city purchases. I guess probably just an explanation of what we're doing and why we're doing it.
Mayor and Council, in the course of the study being carried out by A.L. Phillips and Associates, one thing that was noted was that the current state statute allows for the ability for the city to go up to $50,000. We currently have $25,000 within our policy, and we'd like to request that we amend our purchasing policy to be commensurate with state statute.
So all this is doing is bringing it up to what the state already has.
Second.
Counsel.
I think the Budget Committee concurs with that recommendation.
Okay.
Let me ask a couple of questions. Is there a statute that determines the limit that can be changed?
On change orders?
Yes.
Yes, there is.
What is that limit?
It's going to be, it's chapter 252 of the Texas Local Government Code, and it's one to where, if it's one to where it's not increased by more than 25% of the original contract price, or decreased by 25% of the original contract price.
And council can exert authority to that level or less. And there's been several discussions at the staff level since that statute went into effect, and you currently see all contracts over $25,000. The state does allow that to be handled at the administrative level up to 50.
So if I read, if I got this correct, if we approve a contract for $1,000, 25, if it, plus or minus $25,000, we're about to okay the authority to make those changes?
If it does not increase, I'm sorry, I didn't get the second number. If it doesn't increase the original contract price by more than 25%? If the number you said was 25?
Yeah, I did say 25. I do think that the city manager should have the authority to make those kind of changes, if necessary. I'm just wondering what the limitations are on that. No offense, Ed.
No, it's, I mean, it's, it's on the position. I just wonder where, you know, as I mentioned, it's the state statutes will guide that, what's, at what point, does it become, either we have to figure out a way to not have that change order be in that amount, or else we're going to run into purchasing issues.
Oh, we can slow down some processes, because Wade didn't have to bring it back to council.
Has that come up any time?
There were a couple of times during some major, the major construction projects with the city center and with the golf course, tennis court, or not golf course, well, possibly with golf course, but with the rec center tennis center, where you had issues of change orders and trying to get that done. And I think there may have been some ratifications that council did versus approvals.
And a customer to, to pass that information, mention upward?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Wyatt made the motion. Mayor Pro Tem Alcat made the second. Any other discussion? Not will vote, all those in favor. Motion carries. 11D, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to test a partial assignment notice and consent by and between the City of Missouri City, Texas, FWP 14623 LLC and Mark Hurstine pertaining to the partial assignment of a tax abatement agreement for certain real property improvements from FWP 14623 LLC to Mark Hurstine. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Items 11D through 11G are all related. Council has passed tax abatements in the past for worn alloy and allied fittings. The property ownership, what these do is the tax abatements need to be with the owners of the property. They are assigning that, transferring that ownership, and so we need to assign the tax abatement to the ownership entity. It has no impact on the company, no impact on the abatement, no fiscal impact to the city. All operations will continue. Would recommend that council approve this and the subsequent items.
All this doing is transferring it to the real owner.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Their second?
Second.
Councilman Wyatt made the motion, councilman, I mean, Emery made the motion. Councilman Wyatt made the second. No discussion? Not will vote, all those in favor. Motion carries. 11E, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to test a partial assignment notice and consent by and between the City of Missouri City, Texas, FWP 14623 LLC, Mark Hurstine, and Allied Fitting LP pertaining to the partial assignment of a tax abatement agreement for certain personal property from FWP 14623 LLC to Mark Hurstine. Is there a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Councilman Second made the second, all those in favor. Motion carries.
Get the money.
Item F, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to test an assignment notice and consent by and between the City of Missouri City, Texas, Mark Hurstine and FWP Properties LLC pertaining to the assignment of a tax abatement agreement for certain real property improvements from Mark Hurstine to FWP Properties LLC. Is there a motion?
So move.
Councilman Emery made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Wyatt made the second. All those in favor. Motion carries. 11G, consider a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and the city secretary to test an assignment notice and consent by and between the City of Missouri City, Texas, Mark Hurstine, FWP Properties LLC, and Allied Fitting LP pertaining to the assignment of a tax abatement agreement for certain personal property from Mark Hurstine to FWP Properties LLC. Is there a motion?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'm just the mayor.
Come on. Give me your chance.
Second.
Councilman Smith made the second.
I'm there.
We do have comment.
I know I'm a dollar late, but you're short on this one. I didn't know all these reasons. I know the good intentions on why you started tax abatement programs, but let's all be very honest. Tax abatement programs, whether they were from the state or the federal government or the city, was to induce companies to come into your city. Okay? It's like priming the pump. It is not there for main stable corporations, and it is not there for corporations to take advantage by giving it down to other people, whether it be the owner, whatever, business reasons they choose to do. If they want to save money, they either need to reduce their prices or raise their prices. But to put that on the backs, because at some point in time, taxes will come back on the citizens, just like Stafford lost TI. You and none of you know how long any of these companies are going to be in this city. I know we want to think they will be, and a lot of you guys probably gone in 10, 15, 20 years. But at some point in time, this will be paid for. So I would think long and hard about this tax abatement program and how you let these companies, after you give it to one person, able to switch it off to somebody else. They should be able to do that financially themselves for their advantage or disadvantage. That's my opinion and only my opinion.
And Joe, I think you need to clarify, this is the same people, it's a different name, but it's the same owners, it's just changing the name. Is it not?
There's always a business reason for it. There's always an advantage to those companies. I don't care how you switch your name around. If you don't think it is, that's your opinion. My opinion, from being in business all the years, that there's always some advantage for it, or else they would have asked for it in the first place when they came here.
And they did.
What we did tonight, Joe, only helped us to collect the taxes that could be due to city in addition to what's abated. And it takes a piece of property that may be on the tax roll now for $10, and now is on the tax roll for 50, compared to before these companies came.
That's correct. The city entered in the tax abatement to attract the companies to locate here. The change that we're having is required underneath the abatement agreement for assignment. The restrictions, the requirements for the company to produce the things they promised in consideration for the abatement is there. This is a corporate legal structure, and as such is required in the abatement, in the abatement agreement for us to provide consent. It does not impact financial limitations, the financial requirements that are in the existing agreement. We are not creating a new agreement, and we're not changing the requirements that the company is obligated to.
And we're not changing companies.
That's correct.
It's like.
It's the corporate structure of the ownership, which is, which has to be in the abatement.
And they've had the abatement since we gave it to them. And you might mention, you might talk about the fact that if they were to shut their business down, what happens in the tax abatement situation?
There's a recapture provision that indicates that it should, if they default, the city has the opportunity to recapture the taxes that had abated.
Right.
Plus penalties and interest, I believe.
So there is a reason for them to stay in business.
In addition, the city, as we've talked about previously, has witnessed a return in excess of what has been promised by these companies for the capital investment. And prior to the actions the city has taken, the tax, as you've seen in some of your projections from your budget, you've actually switched and you have grown the amount of property that is commercial, that's property taxes that come from the commercial because of the investment that has been made as part of your efforts.
And typically, these don't work unless there is participation by other governmental entities.
That is correct.
So it's just not the city by itself.
Right. And the concentration of the value of a commercial property per acre is typically much higher per square foot, much higher per acre than it is on residential property. You create a greater value. In addition to that, you have the jobs and other capital investment that comes from that.
So we got the county.
You have the county as well that participates. You have, in some cases, you have the improvement district, in some cases, you do have the HCC.
But never the school district.
The school district is not, is not, by law, is not allowed after September 1st of 1999, with the exception of what mega projects, there is slight, but none of, none of these qualify for that.
But they get 100% of the value.
They do.
Plus, one of the primary objectives of this council is to transfer the burden of taxes from the residents to businesses.
That's correct.
And this is a prime example of this process taking place.
And you're not abating all of the taxes?
Yes.
You're collecting taxes on a portion of it during the abatement, then after that rolls off, you collect 100%.
As Mayor Scarsello tell you, he's not crying too badly over TI leaving, being that all the property that was surrounding TI was ag exempt.
And they're looking at, they're looking at about a half a billion dollars of investment into that site.
Now, it won't be.
And somebody wanted already.
Yeah. So when it gets redeveloped, it won't be ag exempt anymore.
That's correct.
And, yeah, it's not a bad deal.
All right. There was a motion by Councilman Wyatt and a second by Councilman Smith, all those in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council.
Thank you. Are there any announcements? I do know we have executive session, and then after that executive session, we will come back out here into open session to announce the actions we're taking in the executive session. So if you want to stay around, we won't be gone very long.
And that executive session is Personnel Police Chief.
Yes, it is. Police chief. Yes, we got, yes, we will come back so we can make the announcement. But the legislature couldn't make the announcement then because we had to take the action. We needed to take the action.
How are you?
What are you saying, man?
All right.
I'm good.
Good seeing you, Dan Frank.
Are they?
Plenty busy.
No.
Yeah.
Good to see you.
How you doing?
Hey, how you doing, man?
Doing well.
Doing well.
Well, good seeing you.
I got mine. I got mine right here. Whatever.
Want the box?
No, I don't need the box. Give them to Maria.
We'll put it in your office, Mayor.
The box? I don't need the box. I got this.
The award?
I got the award right here.
Those are the expression, Chris, I'm really glad everyone stayed here with us. Because they're your own, or they, either I didn't buy it, or we just built up this thing. I didn't know. We have, I was a day to work, because I have. You doing good? Good. Yeah.
I got it.
Yeah.
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 Oh, that's good.
You already got it.
Yeah.
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 Yeah.[1723.12]
Better come here, you got to break the tie.
Now, we didn't buy you ammo, right?
You got to come justify breaking the tie.
They made me tell me to leave my stuff here.
Well, remember this, Mark. Spring and close came apart to residential development. Oh, God? Yeah. To, to, to support, to support those residential developments.
What is this for?
Oh, this is the... At your glass half circle.
Sharing a strong arm of...
Man, that's a cute camera. That's a white camera.
Six, seven. I've got them all in. What's the quick side? This is the quick side. Was able to get them into...
Samsung. Galaxy 2. And it connects to the internet, so everything I take is uploaded to it.
Really?
Yeah.
But you can change the card out and...
Good toys.
Yes. All right, we will reconvene you back into regular session and do whatever we need to do.
Designation of Mike Bearzen as Chief of Police, as per recommendation of the city manager.
Yes, sir.
So move. Second.
Councilman White made the motion. Councilman, or Mayor Pro Tim Alcat made the second. All those in favor?
Congratulations.
Ah, smart guy.
Congratulations.
You want to make any comments?
Well, actually, I've learned to try to keep this short as possible. Advice somebody's giving me over here, sometimes less is best. First of all, thank you for the opportunity. As most of you know, I've been at this for more than 25 years. I consider it an honor to work for this fine group here, and not just a group that's sitting here now, but the group that's always been represented up here, has always been supportive of the police department as far as I can remember, and that is 25 years plus. And then this group out here, generally here, I know the regulars that come out here, and they're always supportive. Even when we know that we can improve, I don't think of any of us that have ever had the opportunity to serve as chief have ever walked away from you all feeling belittled or, you know, degraded, even when we need improvement and you give us critique. So I appreciate your critique. I look forward to it and hope to have bigger and better things in the future than what you've ever seen, so.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Congratulations to you. Yeah, I think we need to. Cory, we're going to come down there and take a picture with the chief.
Your wife found him and got him to sit over? Yes. Uh-huh.